Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the singing of O Canada.
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons come in. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true North strong and free. From far and wide O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keeperland, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, record of attendance, Linda, you're good? Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? An approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? So I'm looking for a motion. What's that? I'll put that under 11A, and I'll put it with your name.
I just remembered it is lighting on Hawthorne Street. Thank you, Your Worship.
11B, lighting on Hawthorne. Anything else, Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, Your Worship, if there are no more additions, then I would make the motion to accept.
Another one, maybe?
Right after.
Go ahead. CAO?
Your Worship, under additions, could we put retirement benefit, please?
That's C, 11C. Okay, Counselor Dawes, you're making that motion. Moved and seconded?
Yes.
Any discussion? Questions being called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. So I just put in here, I sent an email out, and we just wanted to dedicate this meeting to Fred Hatfield. I don't think we can all agree that nobody loved this community more than Fred. He told the world about us every single week for many years, and we all appreciated him and cared for him. So we just want to dedicate this from council to the town and to his family, to Fred. Approval of minutes. Town Council, September 10th, 2015. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions being called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Public hearing, September 10th, 2015. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions being called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Town Council, September 18th, 2015. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions being called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Town Council, September 24th. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions being called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Committee of the whole, September 24th, 2015. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions being called, all those in favor? Contrary, motion carried. Council, September 24th. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions being called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, thank you. We have a presentation by Grant Thornton. We just got here, so nobody needs a break, so you're good to go with all of our full attention. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Your Worship. So for council's information, we met with your audit committee previous to this, and we went through, there's also a set of financial statements that are prepared that are the non-consolidated financial statements, and they're prepared more for Service Home Scotia than for an audit perspective. But we went over those statements in detail, and then we also went over the consolidated financial statements that we're going to look at here tonight as well. And I've left a copy at each one of your desks. And we also went over our report that we have to issue each year after the end of the audit to talk about the results of the audit. So those have already been discussed with your audit committee. So I'm just going to do a high-level overview of just the two main pages of the financial information. But if you have any questions, we are here, you can ask what you would like to learn about. So I'm going to start by just going over our independent auditor's report, which is on page one. So the first paragraph is the introductory paragraph, which outlines that the financial statements are consolidated for the Town of Yarmouth for March 31st, 2015, along with a statement of operations and accumulated surplus, changes in net financial assets, cash flows, and a summary of significant accounting policies. So that's what follows after these pages. The next two paragraphs are really the responsibility paragraphs. The second one outlines that it is management's responsibility for these financial statements, which includes setting a system of internal controls that's appropriate to collect the data during the year. And they have to make sure that they're in accordance with the Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. Their purpose is ours, is to make sure that the financial information is free from material misstatement. So as your auditors, it's our responsibility to be able to express an audit opinion on the financial information contained herein. We must conduct our audit in accordance with the Canadian generally accepted auditing standards. So there is a very regimented structure of how audits are conducted, and we must make sure that we follow those rules. We have to make sure that we've done a proper plan and that we are able to implement that plan. Our audit always focuses on those areas where we think that there could be the highest risk, that there could be a misstatement, because that's what we're looking for, so that we can correct them. We also look at all the accounting policies, and we look at any accounting estimates that have been made by management during the year, and that's what we make our assessment based on. So we believe that the audit evidence we have obtained is sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for our audit opinion, which is at the top of page two. And it is our opinion that the consolidated financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the Town of Yarmouth as at March 31st, 2015, the results of its operations, changes in net financial assets, and its changes in cash flow for the year that ended in accordance with the Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. There is one final paragraph, which we call the other matters paragraph, because we still include information for the utility and review board, because they get your audited financial statements, and they wanted to see the information on your water utility separate. It's not required under Public Sector Accounting Standards, but they wanted them included. So we just refer to the fact that those schedules have been attached at the back of the financial statements, but weren't necessarily required to be attached. And the audit report is dated today, which is the day that council would accept the financial statements. Page three is actually management's responsibility for these financial statements. I won't go through that one, but it's a similar type of responsibility page that is signed by your mayor and your CAO. So then page four is the consolidated statement of operations and accumulated surplus. So these are the revenues and the expenditures, and this is on a consolidated basis. So this takes into consideration the operations of the town itself, as well as all the subsidiaries that it has control over, which is the Mariner Center, the Yarmouth Waterfront Development Corporation, the Solid Waste Management Authority, YASTA. And the Industrial Commission.
And the airport.
And the airport, yeah. So all these entities, your share of each one of these entities is included in these financial results. So if we just look at revenues in total, you'll see that the original budget was set at $18,375,858. And your actual results came in at $20,842,574. So you're about $2.4 million over your original set in budget. And if we look at comparison to the prior year, last year's actual results were $19,327,524. So about $1.5 million higher than last year. And there's really two main categories for which that occurs. Other revenue from own sources, where you'll see the budget was lower than expected and more in line with last year. So the types of things that are in other revenue from own sources that would have increased from the prior year, one of the main ones is rent. So when you would have set your budget two years ago for 2015, you wouldn't have known how much rent would have been charged through the port for the Nova Star operations. So that's one of the biggest numbers that's in that category. As well, if you look down just a couple more grants for capital purposes, again, another item that's really hard to budget for, because it depends on the projects that you're going to have underway. So the original budget was set at $390,000, came in at $2,141,000. So it's up about $1.7 million from the prior year. And that just depends, again, on the capital projects that you have underway. So really, those two items are what makes your revenue end up higher than the budget and a bit higher than the prior year. Your other categories, if you look at them, taxes, grants in lieu of taxes, and services provided to other governments, like those items are very consistent, because the operations are similar from year to year. So those are your revenues. On the expenses side, you'll see that you set a budget of $17,629,880. You came in at $18,402,370, so you're over budget by about $772,000. And the prior year's number was $17,911,906. So you're up almost $500,000 over the prior year. Again, there's lots of things that causes ups and downs in your numbers. But a couple of them, obviously, the ferry terminal itself was a capital addition that was brought on over the last two years. So when you own a capital asset, you have to take amortization on it. And so there wouldn't have been amortization included in the budget, but your actual numbers will have that amortization included in them. As well, you took on the operation of the new high school building this year, so you have costs associated with the maintenance of that building. Under transportation services, you would see that the numbers are up from the prior year. Obviously, we had a year where there was a lot more snow and a lot more operations from that perspective that needed to be undertaken. So that's one of the reasons for increases. You'd also see, if you looked at water and sanitation, you're actually down over the prior year and down from budget in that category. And there was a couple of things, there was two large maintenance items that were set in the budget for water that didn't actually get done during the year. So they'll be done in the future. They're still on the table to be done, they just didn't happen during 2015. So what ends up happening is your annual surplus for the year, budgeted at $745,978, came in at $2,440,204, up from the prior year of $1.4 million. Again, basically from those two larger items we talked about in the revenue cycle, because your expenses didn't grow significantly. And so your revenues grew faster than your expenses. And then you have a couple other items that are not in the normal course of your operations. You actually disposed of an asset during the year. And then your pension that you have, your defined benefit pension plan, changes every year in terms of is it a liability or is it an asset? And over the prior year, from '14 to '15, it actually decreased in value. And that's not unexpected, considering how the markets have played out over the past couple of years. So there's actually a reduction in your asset from the prior year. But at the end of the day, your annual surplus for the year is $2,144,671. Your accumulated surplus at the beginning of the year was $66,731,952, and we add in the $2,144. And your accumulated surplus at the end of the year is $68,876,623. Seems like a big number, but in actual fact, almost $65 million of that number is what you've invested in your capital, your buildings, your roads, your sewers, all the equipment that you use to provide services, is really the biggest number that's included there. If we flip over to page five, consolidated statement of financial position. So these are your assets and your liabilities. And again, that accumulated surplus number at the very bottom ties into the previous page. The top half are the financial assets. So these are items that are considered to be easily converted to cash, and they're segregated from what we call non-financial assets, which is at the bottom of the page. Those are your buildings, your roads, and your sewers, which aren't available for sale. You use them to provide services to your residents. So there's just a clear separation between those two types of assets. And you'll see your financial assets at the top, this year are $11,550,919. Last year, they were $12,843,145. So you're down about $1.3 million. The biggest reason for that is right in the top line, which is cash and cash equivalents. Last year, you had $9,954. And what happened was you had already received the money for the capital renovation that was going to go on at the ferry terminal, about $1.4 million. That was sitting in your cash balance last year. You spent it during 2015. Your other items, your receivables, they're up and down each year, just depending on timing. But nothing out of the ordinary was in those numbers. In terms of the financial liabilities, and these are all of your liabilities, whether they're due this year or they're due in five years. Under Public Sector Accounting Standards, you group them all together. So you don't see just what is your short-term portion and what is your long-term. This is everything added together. So your total is $7,224,679. Last year was $8,982,506. So the balance is coming down, and you can see right directly in your long-term debt. Your payments that were applied to your long-term debt are coming down there. So when we take your financial assets and back off your financial liabilities, you come to a net financial asset position of $4,326,240. So that means you have more assets than you have liabilities into the future. And then the non-financial assets, as I mentioned before, invested in your capital assets is $64,458,971. And that's the value after you've amortized them, because we recognize your assets decrease in value over time. Your original investment that you've made in your capital is $97 million, is how much you've spent on all of your assets. A small amount of prepaid expenses and inventories. So your total non-financial assets are $64,550,383. And you add that with your net financial assets, and you come up with your accumulated surplus again, $68,876,623, which agrees to the prior page. So that's very high level, those are the two main pages. We would have gone through the notes as well. There was only one change in accounting policy for fiscal 2015 as mandated by the Public Sector Accounting Standards. And that was a new section called liability for contaminated sites. So staff had to go through and they had to look at what do you have as properties and decide whether or not they were in use or not in use. And if they were not in use, is there a potential that there could be contamination on those sites? And then if there is, then is there a liability or not? So we worked through that process with them during the year, and as a result, there is no additional liability that's been recorded. So that's the only change in accounting policy, everything else remained the same.
So we're doing okay?
Doing very well.
Counselor Landry?
Yeah, thank you, and I'm not sure if I direct this to you, Your Worship, or the Chair of the Audit Committee, or to the auditors. So whoever wants to tackle it, they can. I'm just wondering, in the audited statement, you may know that the water utility is part of the audited statement. That is correct?
It is.
So I'm looking on page four, under revenues. You report domestic, commercial, industrial water, actual 1650103. But yet, I look at page 27, under the water utility, and that number is different. Can you explain why?
Would you like me to do that?
Yes, please.
I'm just wondering.
So that's the reason why we include them at the back for the water utility, to see, because these ones at the back are what we consider to be non-consolidated and unaudited. So what happens is, remember I said that each one of your subsidiaries is consolidated? So if your water utility charges the Mariner Center for water, when we add them all together, we have to eliminate that. So your water revenue is always going to be less on a consolidated basis than it would be on a non-consolidated basis.
Okay, so that's quite a little bit of a variance there. My next question is, further to the water utility, again. Now, you mentioned here on the assets, or I guess the non-tangible financial assets, you reported tangible capital assets, $64,458,971. Now, is, and I also now looking at page, on page 29, the water utility has $14,415. So is that part of that $64,458,971?
Yes, it is.
So the reality is the water utility fits within that part as well?
As well as your share of all the assets owned by the subsidiaries. So your share of the Mariner Center, the Industrial Commission, all of their assets as well.
So now, as an auditor, and I'm speaking just as Chair of Water Utility, are you comfortable with the fact that we have got, we have basically a corporation that has a budget of $2.3 million a year, and assets in excess of $15 million a year, and we aren't doing consolidated statements? Those statements aren't consolidated? I mean, you said that they're not looked into. I'm assuming, I'm just a teacher, I'm not an expert like you are. But the way it's sounding is that you don't look thoroughly at the water utility?
No, we do, because they are consolidated. They're in your total financial numbers. So we audit them as part of the town itself, right? But then they want to see it on a non-consolidated basis, which is not under Public Sector Accounting Standards. So that's why we call it unaudited at the back. Because, for example, if you look at the bottom of the revenue and expenses, there's a dividend to the town.
Yes.
That's not Public Sector Accounting Standards, right? So unfortunately, the Water and Utility Board wants to see financial statements in a little different perspective than what is in the Public Sector Accounting Standards. So yes, we have audited the water utility, because we have to in order to issue our overall opinion in these financial statements. But the schedules, the way they're presented at the back, can't be audited because they're not in conformity with Public Sector Accounting Standards.
Okay.
Do you understand what I mean?
Kind of. So what I'm getting at is, should the water utility have its own separate set of audited statements? That's my question, I'll cut to the chase.
They've never asked for them? I don't know. Like, I mean, that's really a management decision, I guess.
Just a question. Because to me, just to add to it, to me, it seems like a bit of a, you know, with all due respect, a bit of a skewing in some respects, because you have a $15 million capital asset that's merged into the town, which is there. And similarly, you have a fair chunk of change there. I'm just wondering, are we on the right path? I know CAO is something you inherited when you took over. This has been going on for years. But should we be looking at a separate audit for that, considering the size of the utility?
Well, let me ask a question that might answer the question. We don't actually do an audit of the non-consolidated Town of Yarmouth statements. So the statements that you have here are consolidated. They meet the PSAP requirements, and they are audited because they meet the requirements. Our non-consolidated statement does not meet the standards because it isn't consolidated. So they can't render the audit opinion on those statements alone. So I don't know that you get any extra value, except an extra letter, if you audit the utility separately. Perhaps an extra bill.
Thank you for your question.
Good. Any more questions for the auditors? Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, Your Worship. I was just going to say, before I make the motion to accept the consolidated financial statements as presented this evening by Grant Thornton, I wanted to say thank you very much for taking the time and learned lots, still lots and plenty to learn, but thank you for your patience. And hopefully, that has enabled this evening to be a little easier and shorter for you. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Someone will second that?
Counselor, you know what?
That's why I put my light on.
And this is to the, something brought up during the audit committee. And something that puzzled me for the last couple of years, or three, or four, or five, or six, and I think it puzzled yourself, is Counselor Landry's famous words, is fair chunk of change. We have an item in there called Mayor's Photos that has $43,000 in there. That's a lot of pictures. So I'm just wondering, to the CAO, how that originated? And like, maybe we should be moving that money somewhere else to do something else with it?
Got any idea?
I'd like to defer that matter and provide you with a full answer at the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you. Anything else in there? Because you took good notes.
No, I think, actually, I thought it was going to be a dreadful three hours, but actually, it was quite well. Chris and Gloria did a great job. I learned a lot, even being sitting in the mayor's chair, I still learned a lot about the statements. It was a job well done. I think the Audit Committee is going to be a great addition to the town. They came up with some ongoing concerns that Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Varin, had some answers to and said, ongoing concerns that he said they're going to work on internally. So it's going to be a process, we're going to meet every three months with Gloria and Chris, and then work on that and work on those problems or shortfalls. And there's some, just because of personnel, that we can't do, but they see it in other municipal units. But I thought it was time well spent.
I agree, you were great, we learned a lot. So we are looking, yeah, questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Worship.
I'll sign that and get it off to you. Okay, business. Request for decision air service data mining. CAO?
Thank you, Worship. So there is an effort being led by the Regional Enterprise Network to investigate the possibility of restoring commercial scheduled passenger service at the airport. There was a report in Chronicle Herald Today, which discussed it somewhat. Where that originated was with the airport and with the REN. The REN's identified air service as important to the business community. And so they took a delegation to a recent conference, Altitudes East, Annual Aviation, or sorry, Aerospace Conference in Halifax. They met with a few of the scheduled passenger service carriers. And the answer they received from all in terms of the possibility of considering service to Yarmouth was that they needed to see the data. They will make a business decision based on what the data tells them. And so what we endeavor to do here is to hire a consultant to mine the data that is available on postal codes. They'll look at all of the arrivals and departures through Halifax. And they will determine a number of things from that data, in terms of the size of the market, where they travel to, when they travel, who they travel with, and so on. Once we have that data, then if it looks favorable, then the opportunity is then to go back to the airlines and say, here is the data. Have a look at it and see if it seems of interest to you as a business. Nobody would be interested in providing service here if it isn't looking to be a viable, sustainable route. And there are other airports in Canada that wish to have regional service, and the airlines only have so many planes. And so what they will endeavor to do is if it is in their best interest, looks like the potential for the most profitable, best return on investment, then somebody might consider providing service to our airport. So in order to have the data mined and create the kind of information out of that data that we need, the REN has agreed to put up 25% of the cost. And I'm asking you to support up to $10,000, which would be approximately 25% of what we think the cost of this phase will be. And if you agree, and the other municipalities in Yarmouth County agree, then we'll proceed. And when the RFP closes, consider the submissions, or the REN will consider them, I should say.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a question now, are we reinventing the wheel here? I mean, I'm all for it, I think it's a great idea. But the question, has there been studies, there must have been similar studies done in the past? That's question one. And question two is, help me out with this, what is data mining?
Okay.
All right, so question one is, I think, fairly straightforward. In 2006, we had a company, Atlantis Aviation, did a study for the airport. And one of the things they did do in the process of that study is they looked generally at the data. So they didn't dig into it to the degree that this study would, or this data mining exercise would. What they did determine was the size of the market, the number of people at that time that were flying out of Halifax with tri-county postal codes. That didn't get into who they flew with, necessarily where they went. I'm not sure about where they went, but it wasn't to the same depth as this will be. So yes, but it's almost 10 years old and not same depth. So what is data mining? So basically, this information exists in a database, so a table, a huge table. Every time somebody flies through Halifax Airport, a record is created of their movement. Every time somebody flies through Halifax Airport, a record is created of, of their, their movement. So, postal code, and, and where they went to, and who they flew with, that kind of information. So, data mining is looking at that huge database, and extracting the information that is, that is useful for making this decision. And so, the, the consultants that are hired, and again, I don't know where the data is, how you access it, how much you have to pay, none of that. But they will develop a report that will be informative to any of the scheduled carriers. So, I assume that, let's say, just for, as an example, let's say there were forty thousand departures out of Halifax Airport last year with tri-county postal codes. I expect that they would say where those forty thousand people went from, and maybe even break them down by county. They might say when they flew, might say who they flew with. So, if I'm, I don't know, Air Canada, and I look at it, and let's say that I have eighty percent of those people are flying on Air Canada, well, I'm not necessarily going to be interested in flying a Yarmouth route, because I've already got eighty percent of the market. But if I'm a player in, in the air service who's getting ten percent, and I think that by investing the additional cost to run the service, that I'll pick up a significant part of that market, and at the end of the day, be able to make a profit, better than I can make on another similar run with that airplane anywhere else, then I might be interested in talking about putting a service in here. So, it is by no stretch a slam dunk for or against. It really will depend on the data. And until we have that, we can dream, and we can speculate, but the data will, will drive the business decisions.
Well, personally, I think that's, it's one of the best projects we've had for a while, because it's data we desperately need. I, I was aware of the two thousand and six, you never ask for a question, never ask a question you don't know the answer to. But I'm glad that you explained what that one was. It was a good study, but it just did not have the meat that you're looking for right now. So, Your Worship, I'll move or second if somebody's done it, that we accept the recommendation of the CIO.
Seconded. Okay, any further discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Request for decision smart card fare technology. CIO?
Thank you, Your Worship. So, this is for our, our transit service that we hope to have operational early in the new year. The recommendation here, so, we did a request for proposals to, to solicit a smart card technology for the bus. And we talked about this at the Transit Committee and at Council, how we want to use cards that will, that will be convenient for our customers, that they can load themselves, that we can track a bit of data, so that we know when our customers are using the vehicle, how many, and sort of where they're getting on, or whatever. Basically, it is for customer convenience. So, we had two proposals, and they were reviewed by our planner. And she presented to the Transit Committee, and I believe they endorsed this recommendation, that we purchased the, the, yeah, lost it. We purchased the smart card system from BEA Transit, as outlined in their proposal.
Go ahead. Your light's on, sorry, I have to.
No, that's all right. No, I, I just want to thank the planner, Colleen Robinson. Caroline, yeah, Caroline. I was thinking of the song. Anyway, yeah, you, you've done a terrific job on this, and this is very time-consuming on your, on your part. Very, it takes a lot of work for you to do this. You, you put out the reports that you got, and in the end, in the end, we, we did pick out the best one. I'm, I'm sure we did. So, I would recommend that we accept the recommendation of the planner, as presented by the CIO, for the thirty-four thousand, five hundred, thirty-two, eighty. And delivery date is, it's sixteen to, to four months, is that, is that what I'm reading?
I'm hoping to be able to work out whether they install it on passenger cars.
Good, good. And, and that is two, two, two units, right?
There's, yeah.
There's a backup one. Yes. It doesn't, it doesn't say that here, but there is two units.
Yeah.
Yes, so, we just want to make that clear, so the rest of the council will know that there is two units. And the other unit will be for our spare bus, if and when we need one. So, that's a great deal. And again, thank you for all your hard work on this, and it's not over yet. And I look forward to having more meetings, and getting more information from you and the CEO. Anyway, I move that we accept it.
Moved and seconded. Linda, you can. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, Your Worship. Pardon me, I think between Counselor McIsaac and Caroline, I think you answered my, my question, but I'm not sure, so I'm going to ask it anyway. Would this now delay our initially anticipated start date, the, which was supposed to be the end of September? Is that going to delay it? Or are we still?
Which date are you referring to? We've said a few.
Initially, the, the start date of the Transit Service was initially supposed to be the end of September?
We, I, we said end of November.
End of November.
And that was really ambitious of us, is what I've learned. It, it takes a long time to get a bus put together, and delivered, and ordered. So, we're hoping now to have the system operating in January. And it'll be worth the wait.
Oh, yes, absolutely. I, I do agree. So, then, with the delivery date of about four months, from the date of, of, when you put the order in, that would bring it to February. So, in essence, if we, if we did get the buses, the buses, that'll be, that'll be nice one day. We did, if we do get the bus going in January, then it would only be a month later that, that you anticipate this would be installed?
I'm hoping it'll be before that. I've been in contact with the representative from BEA, and I've talked with our representative from Crestline, where we've ordered the vehicle. So, I'm hoping they'll be able to work together to make sure that they're both delivered at the same time, so we can meet our new anticipated implementation date.
Thank you very much. And the reason I ask that is because people watch, and they've been anticipating, and they've been very anxious for this, for the bus to start rolling.
Me too, I can't wait to ride it.
Thank you.
Good. So, moved and seconded, any more discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Public washroom, Counselor Dennis?
Let staff be directed to look into the cost and possible location of a public washroom on Main Street?
Thanks.
All summer long, people have been, if you're out on the street, people are asking where a public washroom is. So, even up till yesterday, I sent one of my staff to the drugstore, and on the way, there was two gentlemen looking for a public washroom. So, I thought, even if maybe, however, staff does it, but even maybe if we rented a space in one of the buildings, like, say, Tim, where Tim Horton's is, or somewhere like that, if we didn't actually provide a washroom on the street. Anyway, that's for staff.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is, this is something that's been brought up, I know Counselor Mooney can remember, Counselor Langel can remember. It's been brought up quite a few times, and there was never a lot of support around the table for it at previous councils. And I, I really don't know why, because there, especially the, the walk and pass that we have, the trails. They're going to start calling them nature trails, instead of just walking trails, because when, when nature calls, you've got to go somewhere, right? So, when they go on those trails. And it, it's been lacking washrooms for, for a long period of time. And there's always, there's always the reasoning why they don't want to put them in, but there's no reason why we should not put them in. There's vandalism they use, for one, and, and it's, which is true. You only got to look at the vandalism we've had at the washrooms, at our public washrooms, at our ballparks and ballfields and stuff. I mean, that's, that's what makes people want to, want to say no. But nevertheless, we have, where we start the trail, we have a treatment facility down there. I, I don't think it would be a, a big cost, I'm not sure, to put a, a building or up something there at that end, while, before you go on the trail or come off the trail. And up at the other end, I mean, maybe we could even partner with our municipality, you know, municipality of the Town of Yarmouth, perhaps look at something up in their area or our area, to put a, put a, a public washroom on, on something like that, on, on the trail. There's north end, and there's a south end. And if you're looking at washrooms on Main Street, well, yeah, sure, we have the Town Hall. We have businesses that people usually use, ask to use their, their washroom stuff, they usually let them use it. But that's not a bad idea you have, Sandy, of maybe getting a place where we could maybe rent a space. But if, if we're going to do that, then I think we ought to look at, perhaps, supplying, or looking at something on, on the trail system. Doesn't have to be at both ends, start at one end for now, see how it works down, maybe by the treatment plant, or up Milton Way somewhere. But there should be something looked at in those areas. I mean, we have the land, there's lines there, there's sewer lines, there's everything in there. It's, you know, I, I think it can be done. The, the will's got to be there, that's all.
Counselor Langel?
Thank you, Your Worship. And again, I thank Sandy for that excellent motion. That, it has been brought up in the past, as Counselor Mooney has pointed out, or Counselor McIsaac pointed out, sorry there, Moon, Counselor McIsaac pointed out. And yes, previous councils, it has not been well-received. However, a number of us around the table did like it, and it's a very positive step. And the motion, Your Worship, is for the Main Street. And I think, even if we can get something on Main Street, would be a major step, because you have private businesses now, which are, in some cases, allowing people to use their facilities, and we have people coming into Town Hall to use their facilities here. But it would be nice to have a designated spot, and I kind of think we have some space downtown that's kind of empty, considering my recent walk, I've, yesterday and today, we do have some empty buildings. So, it might be a possibility that we can do something very proactive there. So, I think it's an excellent motion, and I think it's something that we should look at. So, I'm all supportive of it, go for it.
Okay, anymore?
I just know that when I was in Digby, we were walking along the streets and everything, and there was, like, they had a public washroom there that was open, and you could go in and use the washroom. So, that's what gave me the idea that we should be able to have one as well. And plus, I'm not sure on the washroom on the waterfront, because when you're down there, when I was painting this summer, we had the same problem. So, I wasn't sure on the times, but I told them that they could go over there.
CIO?
Yeah, I had asked park staff back in the summer to just do some preliminary investigation into public washrooms, partly because, obviously, for people enjoying our town, you know, we don't have many public washrooms, and those that we do have aren't open all hours. It, it's important for families coming into town. None of our parks have public washrooms, so you find yourself, you know, feeling kind of sheepish going into businesses, or what, what have you. Yeah, yeah. And so, so it is something that was on our radar. I do have some information from staff around best, best practices for public washrooms. So, if the motion passes, then we can, we can investigate as directed.
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Brett Hatfield, Counselor Langel?
Thank you, Your Worship. This is going to be very short. Since the passing of my dear friend Fred Hatfield this week, I have received numerous emails and several calls of people feeling that the town should be doing something in his memory. For example, a, a street, or a park, or wherever. And for the record, Your Worship, my response has been the same, and I do, knowing Fred, as many of us around this table is, do, I'm very uncomfortable with us as a town doing such a thing, because the man was very humble. The man was not into that. And I've simply directed the people to please contact the family, and if it's the family's wish, then they can, then they can advise us accordingly. But I, for one, knowing the man, as I've done for forty-two years, I, I really, that's something he does not want, and he's a very private individual. But if it was the family's wish, I would support it one hundred and fifty percent. I just wanted to make that statement, Your Worship.
Council expenses, which we've, that's you, what we've done this.
Thank you, Your Worship. Very quickly, I'd like to have an update for the next Committee of the Whole. If at all possible, I have a motion, I believe, there, that staff advise council at the October twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen Committee of the Whole, as to what will be required to have all the mayor and town council expense claims available to the public on the Town of Yarmouth website no later than December first, two thousand and fifteen. That is my motion. Just to speak to that, Your Worship, this has been bandied around. We have the new computer system in place. I'd like to get a timeline in before our term on council is over. I'd like to see those online. I've had people asking me, and asking me, and asking me, and, and it's something I think we should do. So, I'd like the CIO and his staff to look at this, and see if we can pitter-patter and get at it.
Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, Your Worship. I, it's not too, too long ago, but I am questioning myself. Was this not actually through, through you, Your Worship, to the CIO? Jeff, you addressed this, was it at the last Committee of the Whole? You, you, you explained and addressed that?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure which meeting it was, but I'll, I'll, I'll restate my answer at that time, and we can get an update from the Director of Finance, perhaps, at the Committee of the Whole. At the time, we were in the audit process, I believe, and the, the resources that we had were involved in that. And the answer was that once we were clear of that, then that would be a project we would take on. So, obviously, tonight, the audit process was completed.
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Update on staff review? Well, these are, these are.
These are what, Your Worship?
Well, they're, they're taken care of at the, at the Committee of the Whole.
Your Worship, I beg to differ. These have been kicking around for over a year. I don't think they're being taken care of. I mean, I'm, I brought this on the agenda, because I know what's happening, with all due respect, Your Worship. I just simply want to know where we're at. We, last year around this time, put the staff review on the table, we wanted to see what's going on. All I've heard since then is that, okay, we're going to check with other municipal units to see what they're doing. I've checked with other municipal units too, and I don't know what they're doing. I'd like to have some report, and I didn't put it in a motion, because I, I'm trying to figure out what's the problem here. Is it that we don't have it in the budget? Do we not want to do it? Is that the issue? Council gave a direction to do it. But is it the wish of the mayor and CIO, that you don't want it to be done? Are we doing it? I'm curious, like, where are we at with that? I'm just saying, well, where is it at? I don't see a great deal of progress, Your Worship, in this step. I heard, well, you can't do it, because we need a strategic plan. Okay, well, we're not doing the strategic plan either. So, we have a motion that this council passed, that we are looking into staff review. That was the motion. Ain't nothing being done, from my perspective.
So, so let's ask the CIO, but first of all, that the mayor does not wish it to be done, I have no control over this. This goes to staff. So, let's be clear on that. CIO?
Thank you, Your Worship. I will have a report for council at the next Committee of the Whole. I was intending to bring something forward a couple of months ago, that was a little off. And I did receive some feedback that it wasn't, it wasn't urgent. So, with that, I didn't make an urgent point of it. It won't take a long time to put it together, so, for the Committee of the Whole in two weeks.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. Yeah, Jeff, questions for you. But we talked about this some time ago, and, and you're right, as long as we have it up, you know, for, for the first of the year. But this is going to be a, a financial commitment, I would, I would think. There has to be money put up for this. So, you're going to have, hopefully, you'll have all the facts and figures when you bring it forward, whenever it's, whenever you have all the facts and figures. And I don't think it's a bad idea, at times, that Counselor Langel and whoever other, whatever other council, to bring up issues. That's what it's all about, just reminders to council and staff that these are still pending, and we like to be updated on them, when we can be updated on them, and they not go off the radar. Because this, this is very important, not only for, for staff and the CEO. This is, I think this is a good thing. This, this, this particular review is, it's not anything special for the Town of Yarmouth to take upon itself. I mean, this is done, this is done in corporations, big business, small business, and what have you. So, I, I, I think it's a, it's a good thing, and I'm looking forward to hearing what you're going to present to council at the next committee, either at the next Committee of the Whole, or the one after, how long it takes you to do it, as, as long as it stays on the radar. And I thank you.
Okay, good. Update on the compost.
One, and I apologize for bringing this up, but here's another sensitive topic. The previous council, I believe I can be corrected, acquired a compost bagger. Over the last two or three years, we've had a number of issues. The Town of Yarmouth has wonderful compost. We produce through the compost facility, an incredible resource there, it's great. We have the bagger unit. There was a number of snags, one snag we needed. One snag, we needed labeling. It had to be approved by the Food Inspection Agency, which we've done. We've got the labeling done, that's been done. There was an issue with the bags, I'm not sure where that's at. But the big issue I seem to hear every year is that, one of the biggest problems is, we can't bag it because it's too wet. That's the problem, I think. And I'm wondering, could we at the next Committee of the Whole take a few minutes to really look at this? Because the Communities in Bloom Committee has been promising this community bagged compost for three years. And I'm wondering, will we ever see it? You know, because you can't really keep promising people things if it isn't going to happen. And I'm wondering, do we need a dry facility to dry this stuff out? Do we need a place to put it? Should we bag it now? These are things I'd like to see us look at, because the concept is incredible, your worship. We've got a great compost resource, we've got the equipment, I think, we've done all the hoops we needed. We just want to get it together for the spring of 2016.
CIO?
Well, it has been a journey. Yes, we bought the compost bagger almost three years ago. And it is a great idea. We have had some issues. One of the issues was getting, frankly, a proper-sized bag that could take the weight and not be too bulky, and so we were able to source bags. The first bags that we found that were of the right size were very expensive. And so it was a matter of finding a bag that was reasonably priced, that was about the right size, that could be handled, handle the weight. The compost, as I'm told, is 75 percent moisture, and that makes it very heavy. It is like a sponge. It sucks up moisture like crazy. Anyway, so we got the bags. Then there was the labeling issue. CFIA regulates the labeling of compost, and you have to be very precise in terms of how you label. So one of the things you have to indicate on your label is moisture content and weight. Okay? So getting some agreement on that issue was a bit of an issue, because our compost is stored outdoors until it's bagged. And so because the nature of the climate and whatnot, that is not something that we can easily control. What we did last year to try and manage the moisture content so that the stuff could be bagged and managed and handled is we covered a fair amount of it. Excuse me. Sorry about that. We covered a fair amount of it. It did not dry to the extent that we had hoped, because apparently it wicks up the moisture, it likes the moisture so much. So having it covered wasn't quite enough. That being said, they are going to try to bag a quantity of the material in the next couple of weeks. Okay? So at the Committee of the Whole, we can give an update on the progress, how that's gone. If they can tell me when they're doing it, I'd let you know if you want to go out and sort of see the operation. You know, it is something that we very much want to do, but it has proven challenging. The other constraint we have, of course, is manpower to do it. It is a manual process, to a large extent, loading the hopper and then managing the bags as they're filled. And our staff, we have five staff at the compost facility. You'll recall, last year, we thought that we might be in a position of shutting down, that we had, there was a private sector participant in the composting market, and as it turned out, they weren't able to become operational to take residential green carts, or, for that matter, commercial organic waste. So we didn't lose any customers. In fact, we've picked up some customers. And so now we're dealing with greater volumes than we ever have of the material, which isn't a bad thing. It just, we haven't had the extra staff to do this. I'm to the point, frankly, that if it takes extra staff, if we have to hire some part-timers to bag some of this stuff, if it's baggable, let's get it bagged. Because you're right, it is a great resource and something we have been promising. So we'll get an update from the engineer in two weeks at Committee of the Whole. One of the things that he has told me is that he has, in fact, looked into the cost of one of these fabric buildings, the, like, salt sheds, that kind of thing. And, you know, we're talking about for something for this purpose, somewhere in the area of a quarter of a million dollars. So as good as the compost is, I had the same reaction, that that is an awful lot of money to dry compost. So we'll see if this covering idea gets it to the point that we're able to effectively bag it and provide it to our residents. But that is still our goal, and it has been a journey.
Yeah, and just a supplement to that, and my thought on this as well, I mean, even if we looked at maybe a private partnership in some case, for example, you have the Allwood Plant sitting up there basically empty. You know, there's a facility there that I know it's for sale, but even for temporary of the owners, I mean, we've been very good. I know Mary Moot, through her Allands-on-Deck, they painted the building and cleaned it up quite nicely. Even if we could find a home for a few ton of compost during the winter, you know, to put it inside there where it's nice and somewhat dry, I don't know how the roof is in there now, but just a place to kind of harbor it so that we would have it for the spring was the thought. So that was the intention. I had a motion there, your worship, on that. I don't think it is necessary. I think, Jeff, you got it, do you think? You don't need that motion, do you? Want me to put it on the books, or?
Not necessary for the motion. If you're happy to follow up with Mr Ernst at the Committee of the Whole, he'll be here.
CIO?
So, your worship, I just wanted to bring a little update to council on the Municipal Government Act review. Some of you took part in a session at Mariner Center yesterday, where representatives of the province were on hand to introduce the process and describe the process and timelines. And there was an opportunity for you to provide some input, some basic thoughts on areas of the Municipal Government Act that might be looked at in some depth. The Act is very long, as probably all of you know, and certainly not every line is going to be studied and picked apart. But what the committee is looking for, what are the issues with the Municipal Government Act? You know, things that are there that need to be reconsidered, amended, things that aren't there that should be added to give municipalities, towns and municipalities, the authority or the ability to deliver on our services effectively. So any individual can go on to the website, and I will share the link, both online as well as through email with council. Up until November 9th, they are receiving ideas from any individual, and so any one of you, if you happen to think of something, I'll send you the link, you can click on it, submit an idea. You can do that as many times as you want between now and November 9th. Then the working groups will take all of that information from people who have opinions about the Act, and sort of distill it to a number of core themes or issues that will be researched and amendments created. So what they're asking is that, starting in January, as the new amendments are being crafted, they want to put them back out to councils for your feedback. So what they've asked is that every council in the province make as a standing item on their council agendas, review of proposed Municipal Government Act amendments. And so as we meet, either in Committee of the Whole or council, we can look at what has come in since the last meeting, discuss it, and any feedback that you have, we'll capture and feed back to the province. Okay? And so they're not going to wait until they have it all complete. They're going to, as bits of it get finished and ready for feedback, they'll send it out. That process will end in June. Okay? So for roughly a six-month process of receiving amendments, providing feedback, their intention is to stagger the amendments as they go to the legislature. So after the municipal elections in October, they'll do some information sessions with councils, because there's likely to be some changes on some councils. They'll inform you of what the amendments are that are forthcoming, and then they will stagger them to the legislature. So just because something is on the list to be introduced doesn't mean it will be introduced right away. And I don't have any information on how they will determine which goes first and which goes next year, kind of thing. But generally, that is the process. And three of our staff are on working groups, including myself, and so, and the chief, fire chief, is on a working group, as well as Mr Ernst. So any feedback that you have, that you want to provide to us at any point in the process, we'd be more than happy to receive.
And to that working group, Jeff, the way it's going in the last couple months, it might be Yarmouth, Bridgewater, Truro, it might only be four or five towns in Nova Scotia the way they're dissolving. Is any of that discussion taking place? Because I know we just learned about Piersborough and Mulgrave, and of course, we had Hansport, Bridgetown, Spring Hill. Has there been any talk about the town aspect in that?
Yeah, so the working group I'm involved with is the Governance Efficiency Group. So we look at kind of the basic stuff around the authorities of council, of staff, and so on. But we also look at the sections of the MGA that deal with dissolution and amalgamation. So we have the restructuring question. And that's kind of the way that we've talked about it at this point, because, you know, whether it's dissolution, amalgamation, you know, the regional governments, there's criteria around that. We're looking at that as a big question within the Municipal Government Act, is what really are the tools that towns and municipalities need, or annexation, sorry, is another one. What are the tools that towns and municipalities and villages need if they want to undergo structural change? Because there's kind of a suite of options right now, and some of them are proving to be, I guess, effective. They're getting to an end state. And others, such as annexation, haven't been used much, and where they've been attempted, it's been very costly and unsuccessful. So the restructuring question is within the review.
Because the thing I'm interested, the component I'm interested in is, here they are, like Spring Hill going in with Cumberland County, but I think, at the end of the day, I know the government now, and I think the previous NDP government is giving the municipalities some money to sweeten the pot, to go in with another municipal unit now. I don't know if that's going to save money in the end, but do you see it in the end that, of course, the tax rate's a little higher, like in Spring Hill, than it is in Cumberland County? But do you think it's going to even out? Because the thing, that's the most important part about this whole question is the infrastructure. And of course, mostly the infrastructure's concentrated in a town, right? So I'm just wondering how it's going to affect us years down the road, that they might be downloading the responsibilities. You're taking care of the town now in Spring Hill. Now, the government come in, might come in and say, you're going to be taking care of your own roads from now on, because you're already doing it for a portion of your municipal unit now.
Have you been reading my emails? Because it's funny, and I only say that in jest, because I started this morning, after reading the article in the Chronicle Herald about Piersborough, I thought back almost a year when we were going through that fiscal review thought process. And you'll recall from that, that we talked about the Canadian Council of Ministers of Environment Regulations on Wastewater, the CCME requirements, and what that means to the Town of Yarmouth in 2040. That is a $20 million pill that we are going to have to swallow, apparently, to reduce the suspended solids in our effluent by an average of seven per million. And so it doesn't seem like great value for your money when you consider how the, you know, Yarmouth Harbor is actually not in bad shape. But that is the regulation that we will have to meet in 2040, and the reason we're 2040 is because of how good the quality of our effluent is right now. Piersborough was facing 2020, and this we talked about. We said that those regulations and the requirements for infrastructure will bankrupt towns. And it hasn't bankrupted Piersborough, but they've looked ahead and they're looking at $5 million, and they've said, we can't absorb that. So their solution is to dissolve their town into Cumberland. That doesn't change the fact that $5 million has to be spent. It might change who has to pay for it. And so if you're a resident of the county, and that treatment plant serves a definite number of people, I mean, you're either connected or you're not, I don't know how you're going to feel about taking on that capital burden or operational burden. Now, you're right, the province has come in to these dissolutions in Bridgetown and in Spring Hill, and has put millions of dollars on the table to assist with infrastructure. But I can't, I don't think it's reasonable to expect the province to do that in every instance, to cover these costs of the infrastructure, because if they didn't, if there was actually a program that was one-third, 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 then the province would only be on the hook for a third, not the whole shot. So dissolution is, has the potential to prove to be very expensive for the province, so I'm not sure that that is the right answer. The part that, you know, when you think about our own wastewater plant, we've gone through an exercise over the last few years, where we have been moving the subsidy, the tax subsidy, out of the wastewater operation. So the wastewater fees that people pay will pay for the operation of our wastewater plant. What's good about that is, just the principle I talked about a minute ago, is that people who benefit from the service pay the full shot, and those that don't won't be paying. And to that, to some degree, you have a level of control over your cost. If you control how much water you use, then you control, to a certain degree, your bill. If towns, and I've asked this question of a member of the Utility and Review Board, if towns like Spring Hill, and if you've read their decision on Spring Hill, it was all about infrastructure and the effects of their aged infrastructure, if towns did what we do, which is funding the amortization, for the last 10 years, we put $20 million or more into infrastructure, if every town did that, would they be facing the question of dissolution or amalgamation under the same conditions? Or would they be in better financial shape and able to make a decision about their governance free and clear of the financial question? And the answer is probably, yeah, if they funded their amortization, they would be just fine. The Utility and Review Board that oversees that process, they require every utility, every water utility in the province to fund their amortization, including ours, for the last 20 years or longer. So the fact that they are involved in this process, and I read the Spring Hill decision, and it doesn't speak about funding amortization, either in the past, in Spring Hill's case, or in the future, in the Cumberland case. So Cumberland's going to take over this infrastructure, but the board has been silent, or at least what I read, you know, they may have been discussed in the hearing but not written in the decision. The idea of funding their amortization isn't there. Now, municipalities have been required a number of years ago, five years ago, to identify exactly what that amortization cost is and put it in their financial statements. It's in our statements. But what they haven't required is that you fund it.
That's right. And I think when we went through the audited statements here with their audit committee the other day, is when they report or give these things back to the Department of Municipal Affairs, didn't they say they take out that component? They take it out?
They don't want it.
They don't want it? So, and this is a discussion we can have when Mr Churchill comes in, right? But, and it's going to be a discussion, it's going to be held probably at the UNSM, and does it, you could almost say, keep the tax rate low, 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 don't fund any of your depreciation, and then in 15 years, when everything's going to go to hell in a handbasket, just walk away and say, I want to amalgamate, or I want to roll into the next municipal unit. Right? So where's the, where's the incentive? Because the line that we use on amalgamation is, you're going to save administrative costs. And we already know through here, six months ago or seven months ago, that Yarmouth has the lowest administration cost, or the next lowest. But like you said, I think this, Jeff, it's all about infrastructure costs instead of administration. I think, and I don't think there's any one of these towns that have dissolved have done it for administration costs, they've done it all in infrastructure needs, haven't they?
Certainly what I've read, what I've read points to the infrastructure. I haven't read anything that talks about the administrative savings. What I've been told by our municipal advisor who's been through the process, sorry, Robert Frost, who is a municipal advisor, not our advisor, he was the CIO in Hansport. And so when they've gone through the process, is that one of the things that they've done is that, in fact, the reduction in employees is done through attrition, right? So that's over time, they may reduce employees to a lower number as people retire or move on to other positions. So there isn't that sudden, there hasn't been, at least to this point, that sudden dramatic savings in administrative costs. You just touched on the idea of incentives. So what incentive is there to do the right thing, what we think is the right thing? And... And there really aren't any right now, right? There are no incentives to do the right thing, other than if you take your role and responsibility as a council, and ours as a staff, seriously, to look out for the long-term sustainability of the town. So we're doing the right things now because we care about the future. And we're mindful, and we know what that's going to take. And we're in a good position. Over the last 10 years, we've been doing this, funding and amortization. So in the fiscal review process, we supported the elimination of the equalization grant. And we suggested that it be replaced with an incentive. An incentive program from the province that would actually reward municipalities who do the right thing or the best practice, as opposed to propping up the towns or municipalities that are struggling under their current practices. We also talked about that in terms of infrastructure funding, that, you know, whether it's the gas tax or the Build Canada Fund programs that come out, that one of the criteria to determine how much money you receive ought to be, what about, what are you doing in-house to maintain your infrastructure? So in other words, are you putting aside the money, the amortization fund, to pay for the projects that you need to do? Or are you just waiting for other levels of government to put money on the table? And so, again, it could be an incentive if there was a reward in the amount of money you get from the other levels of government, if you are looking after your own responsibilities. And, you know, those things we put forward, and there has been no response to fiscal review in a formal way. I know there's a partnership agreement with UNSM that's under negotiation, but I don't know any of the details of that. But I'm hopeful that at some point, if we keep talking about what I consider best practices in municipal financial management, that at some point, it'll register with either other municipalities or the province that there's an issue that is avoidable.
And I don't think, just last point. Yeah, I'm sorry, Your Worship.
No, that's okay. Put your light on, though.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Your Worship, for the questions, but I don't think we have, with what Gloria and Chris said tonight from Grant Thornton, and our financial position, I think we're in a good spot, not only fiscally, but we're in a good spot provincially with the Minister of Municipal Affairs being our MLA. And I think it's a great opportunity over the next, I know her worship's talked to the minister about this, but I think it's a great opportunity every time you see the minister to hammer that point home, right? Because that's the conversation, I know we tried to meet with him once, but when he comes back, that's the conversation we have to have. And maybe that'd be the only topic on the table.
Yeah. So, yeah, because we're fine, but it's not about us. It's about the whole province, right?
Yeah.
Getting, because when the whole province works, more money comes our way, too.
Yeah, when we started, there was 55 municipal units with 30, how many can, 30-something towns? And now we're in the 20s?
Yeah, we're in the 20s.
Yeah. And it wasn't, it hasn't been a town, town since, what, the 30s?
Created.
Created, I think.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Your Worship, for the light of the middle way.
No, it's good. And you're right, we need to bring that to it.
Your Worship, if I just add one more thing, is that when I met with the auditors, and Jerry and I did meet with them to go through the statements before the audit committee, so we understood exactly what they were seeing, and we could answer any questions they had. One of the comments that Gloria made was about generally the strong financial position of municipalities in this end of the province. And, you know, I don't know this for a fact, but I like to attribute it to the number of shared services that we have, that we don't take the full burden on. If you look at all the burdens that we have that are not in the Municipal Government Act as required, so airports, ports, and doctor recruitment, and all that, we do those things, but we do them in partnership. And I think by doing that, we leverage our dollars, and, you know, probably that reflects on all of our financial statements. I just want to mention as well that although Gloria did, the auditors did present the consolidated statement to council, I may ask the Director of Finance to present the non-consolidated statement at the Committee of the Whole. So that looks more like the budget that you set. So it looks very much like the budget you set. Where this is a consolidation, it pulls everything into one statement, the non-consolidated statement will tell you more about how we did in the town specifically, aside from our...
Minus the partnerships.
Minus the partnerships, yeah.
Good, thank you.
And I'll just give you a hint, it's very good.
But it's a good way to gauge how much the partnerships are worth, too, looking at them side by side. Okay, so we're good. Reports, council advisory committees, committee of the whole, Deputy Mayor. Go ahead.
I move that correspondence be sent to the Refugee Support Group advising of our grants to organizations' process, and suggesting that they attend the grants meeting in January regarding additional funding as they see fit.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that council proactively nominate many dedicated volunteers who organize and carry out events in our community through our annual volunteer recognition reception, held in conjunction with Volunteer Week through Yarmouth Recreation.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move to apply the procedure to develop the podcast concept idea of the Planning Advisory Committee.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
No questions.
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to prepare a plan for snow removal in the commercial areas of the downtown, including Main Street, Side Streets, and Water Street.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that guest presenters be moved up on the agenda to a timely and appropriate place.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Aye. Last one, I move that staff be directed to contact the town of Shelburne regarding that they keep the town of Yarmouth in the loop in discussions with Transport Canada and the province of Nova Scotia regarding the danger of vessels sinking within a navigational harbor.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Citizen Advisory, Planning Advisory Committee, Deputy Mayor.
Two items, Your Worship. From the Planning Advisory Committee meeting of September the 15th, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use by law to permit storage facilities, provided the use is wholly enclosed within a building in the institutional zone as outlined in Caroline's report.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
From our public hearing meeting earlier this evening, I move to amend the municipal planning strategy and land use by law to update the provisions related to signage as outlined in Caroline's report.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions? Go ahead, Counselor Dawes.
Thank you, Your Worship. Although I do sit on the Planning Advisory Committee, and my goodness, this has gone through how many? Yes, it has. A lot of consideration. This has gone through a lot of consideration. However, I did promise, I did give my word to a number of residents who have brought up some concerns. And the question that kept coming up is, are we departing from our small-town feel when it comes to the size of signage? When it comes to advertising, heralding new construction, new construction sites? Or are we going the way of the big city? Another question I have written down.
Do you want to answer that one first? Go ahead. You know what that's...
I know a lot of consideration has gone into this.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So the town of Yarmouth has always permitted construction signs that are advertising a construction project or a construction company that's temporary in nature. We did have size requirements, and the new proposed sign amendments do not include any requirements around that signage, except that it be temporary and that it be removed, that it only be erected during the duration of the construction project. And the reasoning behind that is just that we don't require development permits for construction signs, so it's really hard to enforce the signed requirements. And because they're temporary in nature, it just didn't seem necessary. If there were concerns, and this was something council wanted me to look at, I can do that. I would suggest the first step be that we require development permits for these temporary signs, if that was how we wanted to proceed. But my recommendation is just that it, I don't see it as being a real big, a real large issue at the moment.
As long as the town is offering, and it is through this, a level playing field all across the board, and be it a temporary sign, be it a, well, you've made it very clear in the bylaws. There was something else, of course?
I can think of three construction companies doing projects in town right now that all have signage promoting that project. So I think it's definitely been fairly enforced as in that we're just allowing it to happen throughout the duration of the project.
And as long as it's size-appropriate to the size of the site, that's all.
So I, we don't have any provisions in there that's size-appropriate. If that was something you wanted me to look into, I could...
But no one, no one is, no one is getting preferential treatment?
No, absolutely not.
Thank you. I think that's the way to put it, right? Because that's, when your sign's out there and people see it, and they don't see others with the same size, they think there's preferential treatment, and there isn't. So, okay. Counselor Landrell.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I commend Caroline for her flexibility, and through the planning office and what you guys are doing there. To me, as far as I'm concerned, Your Worship, the bigger the sign, the better it is. Because I think we need to be screaming the fact that we are seeing development in our town, that we are seeing things happening. And it's at the discretion of the developer. I mean, now that I'm back walking a little bit, I can see these various, Caroline mentioned three places, I was by all three today. And yeah, there's some big signs, and there's some little signs. But that's the decision of the developer. If they want to put a big four-by-eight up, all power to them. If they want a 20-by-20 up, all power to them. I think the fact that we're seeing signs in the town of Yarmouth by developers, great. The more of these suckers, the better. So as far as I'm concerned, we should be encouraging them. And I commend the planner for being as flexible as you are. Because they're only temporary, and once the work is done, they're coming down. As simple as that. It's great.
And Counselor Dawes' point, it was, it's a valid question, because it was the perception that, that it just wasn't a level playing field. And that's just not the case. So I'm glad that question was asked. Thank you. Yeah. Bill's put up enough signs. Okay? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Communities in Bloom? Counselor Landrell?
Thank you, Your Worship. This is our usual every year, and I'm very, I wanted to advise council, I did send you a copy of a press release that was sent out earlier this week, that the town of Yarmouth once again did extremely well in the International Communities in Bloom Symposium in Kamloops. We had a delegation of four members out there. And as you have seen, the town of Yarmouth scored five blooms bronze in the circle of excellence. And I should explain this, Counselor Dawes brought up a good point. She said, "Are we competing at a city level?" And the answer is yes, in this category. We were in circle of excellence this year, Your Worship. We were a national award winner last year, as you know, very proud of that. So the town of Yarmouth issued one in the circle of excellence and unevaluated. And we were up against City of Calgary, City of Edmonton, City of St. John's, et cetera, et cetera, downtown Sydney. And we came out with five stars, with five blooms, with bronze, and we tied the City of Calgary. So I mean, that's where we're at. The City of St. John, for example, didn't even get five blooms, they only got four. And poor Sydney only ended up with three. So it's a very strict category, so it's very hard. So we're very proud of the fact that our little town, which was the smallest one of that whole group, and there was others there, and this whole list of them that competed, we did darn well. And I mean, that is wonderful, and a crudos to the people of Yarmouth for all their support to the efforts that we're doing. So that was a success story. We also get special mention, and I think Deputy Mayor McLeod will be quite proud of this one, off the Hawthorne Street project. That was the highlight this year. And there was special mention made at the Symposium of the Beautiful Work that was down on Hawthorne Street. It was a shame the judges didn't see the lights in the final result, but when they saw what we've done there. But our big one was a national one. Again, we've won another national award. I mean, we're a small town, we're one of the smallest towns in this competition. And the fact, and this is one that we've been working on for years, is the National Reclamation Award. The fact that we took a hunk of our property in this town, the town of Yarmouth, and through Jim's Waterfront Development Corporation, through different agencies, we took an area specifically around the cotton mill, around that walking path that we have along Water Street. And we ended up getting the national recognition there for what's known as the Bouchard Gardens Land Reclamation Award nationally. So I just wanted to let council know that the town did extremely well this year. This is probably the best bang for the buck we have for our little membership fee. We end up with two visiting judges that come in, tear our town apart. We haven't got our final report yet, and we're able to see what improvements we can make. And we couldn't have done this, Your Worship, without the support of the CIO and staff. They have been incredible in this, so we've got an incredible Parks and Ground staff. And they sit on our committee with us, it's been excellent. And we've got a hard-working committee and a good, long list of volunteers. So these awards belong to everybody, they belong to the town. And I think it's amazing that a small town of Yarmouth's size is up against the City of Calgary, you know, and we're tying them. So to answer Counselor Dawes' question, yeah, I guess we're on the, competing with cities, Your Worship.
So I'll send a note to Mayor Nancy and tell him, "Congratulations for keeping up with us." And I will, you know I will. I will absolutely do that. I have to write that down, though. Yeah, okay. Good, good stuff. Sorry, Counselor, go ahead.
And on that note of thanking everyone and everything, we have to thank our chair, Ken Landrell, because he's led this, and without him, we may not have got our five blooms. So thank you.
Good stuff. Police Advisory Board, Counselor Landrell.
Your Worship, and again, council's aware, but maybe the public is not, that Staff Sergeant Michelle LaCoix, we're just absolutely thrilled, is now the Town Detachment Staff Sergeant. And we've been waiting for this appointment for some time, and I don't think there's a soul in Yarmouth that doesn't know Michelle, so it's going to be excellent. So good news for the town of Yarmouth again.
Excellent. Reports for information. I have a mayor's report, but we covered a lot of it. For October 2015, many changes come with the fall season, but a slowdown in town activity certainly is not one of them. And as the Parks and Public Works team ready us for the upcoming winter, we thank them and wish them well. The plants and flowers must be put to rest, fountains drained, systems flushed, and much more. It's a busy time of year. Ongoing information is on our website. The Nova Star will be making her last voyage of the season next week, and a decision will be made soon by the province as to the future operator. We're looking forward to the tens of thousands of visitors that will come our way next season, and much time will be spent over the coming months to ensure we're ready for each of them. The work continues on the facade program. Those businesses in the designated area still interested in the program have until the end of October to apply for this year's funding. It's important to note that every program has to start somewhere, and the obvious success of this program thus far means that we are unable to expand next season. It's also exciting to see the Neighborhood Improvement Program in full swing. Thank you to the local residents who teamed up with Housing Nova Scotia to knock on doors and bring the program to over 200 homes. Our sincere hope is that each of the 200 homes takes advantage of this program. It won't make its way back here again, and it's a beautiful gift to the entire town. Many of you have asked about the transit system. The bus has been ordered, and will be here in December. We're looking at a January startup for this new system, so that's exciting. If your mode of transportation for work or leisure is walking, perhaps you've taken advantage of the Maude Lewis Trail that runs from Stars Road beside Subway to Parade Street. A recent announcement brought us $50,000, which will be applied to the new crossing lights at Stars Road, so that those using the trail will be able to cross safely. I have to say this, when I was typing this up, $50,000 for lights, it just says how much everything costs, every little thing that we need. As always, the planning department is very busy. We're in the midst of a municipal planning strategy, MPS review, which is on schedule. To bring us to this point, stakeholder interviews took place, planners on the street elicited feedback from residents, there's been a public process, Stars Road was engaged in June, and a web survey is still available for input, available on our website. As the process continues, a public... available on our website. As the process continues, a public hearing will be held in March for further input. Planning is a complex and intricate process. To help residents walk through the workings of the department and its mission, a series of podcasts is being developed by the planning department. You can find Episode One, Planning Advisory Committee, Who Does That?, on the town of Yarmouth website, or you can subscribe to the podcast on iTunes. It's a great way to learn more about the workings of that department. I, I love that you can get this stuff on iTunes. Good, good work, Caroline. Another review that is being undertaken is the Municipal Government Act, which is the, the law that municipalities are guided by. Working groups have been set up, and we're really pleased that our CIO, Jeff Kishu, and other staff will be a part of that process. If you wish to have input or simply follow the process, go to the Department of Municipal Affairs website where you'll have access to the ongoing review. The Western Regional Enterprise Network, the REN, the Economic Development Agency for our region, held its AGM last week in Digby with a full house attending. The strategic plan was released, and we're excited to continue moving forward on an economic front. A huge thank you is extended to the Volunteer Board of Directors and the entire REN team for their ongoing efforts. As part of the economic development efforts, an RFP was issued to look at the feasibility of re-establishing a scheduled airline passenger service at the Yarmouth International Airport. The request for proposals will look at the market assessment and route development. Travel patterns of people in the region will determine if there is a business case for the service. We discussed this tonight. This, it's not about landing the plane quite yet. We want to extend a warm welcome to our, Councilor Landrell just mentioned this, to our new police chief, Staff Sergeant Michelle LaQua. He's very familiar with the town of Yarmouth and is looking forward to serving his new position. Perhaps he'll be successful in apprehending what I'll call the lamp post bandits. This past weekend, someone vandalized the streetlights from Tim Horton's to Brown Street, and I think there were some other ones, too. The eagles were removed from the tops of the globes, and they hold the whole top together. It's hard to find replacements. And they're very costly. So if anyone out there has any information, please pass it on to, to the RCMP. Frankly, we'd love to catch those who trash all the good work that's being done by others. Well, it's going to be a busy fall. The Chamber of Commerce Business Awards are upcoming as is Music Week, which puts Yarmouth and area on the map in a big way. A little over a month from now, we'll have our Santa parade. Hate the Santa. Whoa. So we're in sandals. Tree lighting, and of course, the lights in Frost Park will usher in another holiday season. As a side note, if you join us in Frost Park for some of the festivities, you'll be able to upload the photos you take faster as the Wi-Fi in the park has been enhanced. This is part of the ongoing Wi-Fi project of the Waterfront Development Corporation, and we thank them for that. So there's lots going on and lots to do. We're glad we're in this together. We encourage each of you to visit the town of Yarmouth website and our Facebook page often for more updates. And Councilor Landrell, I'm going to put, I'm just going to have you write a line for the, um, for the Bloom awards, and we'll put, make sure that gets in the paper with the report, because that's really important. So that's the report for this month. Any questions for committee chairs? And we have additions. So, Councilor McCausick, Department of Transportation?
Your worship, um, I'm sure that people that travel the North Shore and the South Shore, uh, the road, the road, the pavement's one thing, but when you look on the sides of the road and you look at the growth on both sides of the road, uh, growing up, I mean, you, you, you find it hard-pressed sometimes to even see the steel girders, the protector of steel girders on, on the road. There's so much growth growing up on both sides of the road. Uh, it's really hard sometimes to even see the signs, the speed signs and all the other signs. I brought it up to Minister Churchill here last week, and I'm just talking to another minister on that today. I think it might be appropriate if anybody had the occasion to drive North Shore and South Shore, look at the highways, very across Nova Scotia, actually. They're, they're just in disarray. They're, they're, they're not doing the maintenance that they should be doing on them. It's, it's, uh, it's a safety factor, and, and, and they're being neglected. I know it's probably there, like, I know what they're going to say. It's budget. It's money. They don't have the equipment. They don't have the time. But then again, it, it's a safety factor. I mean, there, if there's deers or animals or whatever that comes up, you ain't going to see them, because there's so much growth. It's just unbelievable, the amount of, uh, of trees and growth that it's just, it's coming over the highways. Looks like one of those, uh, you know, 20, 20, 30 movies, uh, The Last Days on Earth or whatever. The, uh, the, uh, the, uh, grass and the pavements all disappeared with, with trees, and it, it's all covered up. And, I mean, it, it's, it's crawling. It's creeping up to the, to the highway itself. Uh, and I'm, I'm not stretching the truth. You, I'm sure, your worship, you, you've had the opportunity to look on both sides of, of the road, traveling Halifax and back, Cape Breton and back. Uh, I, I traveled to New Brunswick this, this past summer through New Brunswick. Beautiful. They don't have that problem. Now, and New Brunswick is another problem, but it's a province like Nova Scotia, right? It's, it's beautiful. It is. I traveled down through Maine. Now, of course, that's the US of A. There's over 300 million people there. I realize that. But Maine is, is a small province. It, it's a, a poor, poor province also. Uh, but they, they keep their, their highways maintained. I, I'd like to see Nova Scotia start maintaining the highways that we have. And, and not, paving is one thing, but making them safe so we can see what's coming on both sides of the road, out of the woods, is another thing. And I think it's a safety factor, and I'm sure there's lots of people that are listening out there that can echo what I'm saying. Uh, I have that discussion with my wife all the time that we, we travel back and forth to Halifax or on the highways. It's, it's just, it, it's deplorable. I've talked to the two ministers. They say the same thing, but I think it has to be brought up. Perhaps a letter, your worship, if it's, the council is in agreement with sending a letter off to the Minister of Transportation, and ask him what his intentions are, what his plans are to move along with the maintenance on, on the highways across Nova Scotia, even, even if it's the both main highways.
Can we ask after he gives us the boat?
No, no, I, I, I don't, I, I, I think this is very important. I mean, it, it really is a safety thing. I mean, I, I've heard some horror stories of people traveling on, on the highways. And, and matter of fact, I, I've stopped, I don't know how many times, to let deer go by on the highways. Daybreak, daylight, in all, all parts of the day. And you can see them coming out of the woods, but you've got to be very sharp. My eyes are always constant on that, because there's just so much brush. It's just unbelievable. You'd only have to go, just turn on the highway, 103, and you only have to go less than a minute. And if you see the guardrails where there's altars, trees, grass, you don't really recall that they're, you know, they don't even look like rails. So, I guess, uh, if we could draft some sort of a letter to the minister, uh, I don't know what that letter would be. I guess the ask would be, what his, uh, do they have a maintenance plan? When do they plan on doing, uh, more, more work on the highways to, to prepare this safety factor? Uh, I guess, uh, Jeff, can you think of, uh, the appropriate letter to write, uh, for this, or?
Just wondering if we just flat-out say... Yes, because we have concerns in our end that is growing up. Tell them what our issue is, and, and ask when they're going to get to that.
And, and also, have they done a survey on, on these highways to see the, the growth that's on there, right? Because, I mean, I don't know how much he travels that highway. Has, does he, does he get reports in from his, they have different, different offices right across Nova Scotia. We have a Department of Works here in Yarmouth. They have one in Shelburne. They have one in Clare. If you drive up through Clare on the back roads, Clare, there's, it's just beautiful on both sides of the road. I mean, they, they keep it nice. I don't know what it is around here, but something's wrong. So anyway, I, I would, I would ask, or make, make a motion that we send a letter off to the Minister of Transportation, uh, appropriate letter asking him, uh, his, the maintenance plan, and has he done any survey work in to look at the state of the, of the growth that's growing up on the sides of the road?
Councilor Dawes?
If I could get a second for that?
Thank you, your worship. Um...
Thank you.
You've made the motion. Have, has someone already seconded that?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. Then, um, I agree. I support it. Uh, I was wondering, though, while, while, uh, Councilor McCausick was speaking on his, uh, on his motion, I was wondering, is it just a question of the growth, or would, is there interest also in looking into fencing just as New Brunswick has? All right. Because it, it all depends on, it all depends on the abundance of the wildlife and, and, and the type and the numbers. Yes, there is.
Good. CIO?
I just wanted to offer as, as a suggestion or as, as an alternative, um, I know the municipality of Yarmouth probably on an annual basis has a representative from, uh, Transportation and Infrastructure Renewal from the local regional office come in and discuss road conditions and so on with them. And since the town residents pay as much for the roads outside the town as anyone else, uh, perhaps we could make a similar request and have either Mr. Newell or Mr. Houston come in, and you could ask them questions about maintenance and whatnot.
Okay. Good. Okay. Call them for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Uh, lighter? Oh.
If I may, your worship, with all due indulgence, uh, could I make a motion that staff be directed to invite representatives of the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure to come to council at a convenient time to update us on, on, to committee the whole, to update us on, uh, clearance of, of highways in the rural areas?
Yep, you made the motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Tweet, tweet. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Lighting on Hawthorne. Councilor McCausick?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, yeah, my question to Jeff, uh, I received a couple of phone calls and had the occasion to speak to a couple of people, uh, down in that area last week, as early as last week. Uh, they love it, down, down there, beautiful. Uh, but there's one spot down where the farmer's market and that is, used to be lighting in the parking lot down or in around there. There's a dark spot there now. It's, it's dark. And they've noticed a, a lot of, uh, different functions going on in, in those areas, right? So, uh, I guess, is it possible to look at it for lighting? Uh, they had our new LED lights on a pole or wherever it was there. It used to light up that whole back area, the whole section. It was really nice. Uh, the, the lighting is, is quite dim now, and they've noticed some activity going on since, uh, since that's been taken out. So, right around where the farmer's market is on Hawthorne Street, in around the parking lots and that?
Hawthorne?
Hawthorne, Hawthorne.
By the colony, or?
By the, by the, uh...
Same side?
Yeah, same side as the, as the farmer's market, the barn and that. Yeah, right there. It's dark. Yeah, right in that area. Yes, correct them, correct them. If it's possible to put a light or anything there, it would be probably, it probably would be a benefit for not only the citizens of the town of Yarmouth, but for those who are, like, to lurk in dark areas. There wouldn't be any dark areas anymore. I like dark areas, but some people don't like them, so. Okay. If you could look at that, Jeff, I'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Good. Oh, okay. So, did you make a motion? Okay. Go ahead.
I, I'll, I'll make that a motion that direct staff to look at the adequate lighting on Hawthorne Street, at the lower part of where the, um, the apartment building is by the farmer's market. Down in that area. Thank you.
Hawthorne. Hawthorne. It is. Moved and seconded?
Question, but I'm going to have, go ahead. Question?
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Were you going to say something?
Yeah, and it's about lighting, your worship, on, uh, we had the announcement about Maud, Maud Lewis Trail, about the light coming over the, at the new crosswalk to be. But what about, uh, somebody asked me a question. Is, is there going to be lighting on the trail itself?
I know I had that question, too, but...
I did, too.
Going to be lighting trails?
Well, I think you could do, with the new LED stuff, I don't know what...
Oh, I think the CIO's got...
CIO's got something for that?
Go ahead, CIO. I mean, we only have so much money.
Yeah, I, we, we can, um, we can look into, into options for that. We've, unfortunately, we've had a little bit of bad luck with, uh, with some of the street furniture that we've put along the trail with vandalism, so we'll, um, we, if, if you want to make that a motion, we can look into that, look at options. One of the things that we, uh, that we should also be thinking about, and, and we'll talk about in the next couple of months, i- around our capital priorities, is, is to think about, um, even opening that street up. And if the street were opened up, street lighting would be...
Yeah.
Would be part and parcel, yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, your worship, I'll make a motion. We look into lighting options on Maud Lewis Trail.
Seconded. Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Retirement benefit? Thank you.
Yes, your worship, but thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion that the CIO, uh, be empowered to use early retirement benefits, uh, in dealing with any negotiations with staff in the future.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of invoices? Oh, sorry.
Your worship, just a point of information, if I may, for council, uh, this evening, uh, marks a very special event. When our, our reporter, Tina Camo, it's her 21st wedding anniversary, and she's here. So, that shows the dedication of the Yarmouth Vanguard. Fred would be very proud of you right now, and it's extremely romantic, so congratulations, Tina.
I just sent her a note and said, "I, we love you, too." Councilor McCausick?
I, I'd just like to just mention one person out there from Boston, Mass, that watches council all the time. Councilor Landrell knows him, the mayor knows him, and, uh, I just want to tell him everything's okay on Pearl Street, and, uh, your house is looking good. So, keep on watching, and, uh, we'll see you next year.
Right on.
So, the date of the next meeting is November 12th. I just want to throw this out there. The Committee of the Whole meeting on the 22nd, are we okay to move it back till 2:00? We've got, um, the wind turbines. We, we really need to be there. At, at noon. So we should be there as many of us as possible. I, I...
Agreed.
I think it's in the municipality. I'm pretty sure. But we'll make sure that information gets out again. So, so Linda, can you make note of that, just so we're reminded that this is that 2:00, but also that we need as many of us to go to the municipality on that day? Um, okay. Happy anniversary. Uh, approval of invoices? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Most, motion carried. And are we finished in camera? We good? Okay. Thank you. Good job.
Well, if you would have kept quiet half the time, it sounded foolish, like municipal infrastructure.
You must have sent it in the...
Want to call you up for money next week? Don't be bellyaching.